I'd like to call the meeting of the Narragansett Regional School District School Committee to order. If we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I would like to alert the public that this meeting is being recorded by NRSD in conjunction with Templeton Community TV and that film is provided to Templeton and Phillipston Cable Access TV. First order of business is we have a bunch of minutes to approve. When someone's ready, I would take a motion to approve the meeting minutes of May 21st, 2019.
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I do have a couple of seconds. Does anybody need time? I know everybody had these. Has everybody read through them?
Yep.
Okay. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, voted unanimously. And we must take a motion to approve the meeting minutes of May 23rd, 2019 of the Finance Subcommittee Meeting. Since that is a committee of the whole, we can approve the Subcommittee Minutes here. The Subcommittee Meeting Minutes here. So I would take a motion when someone is so inclined.
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a couple of seconds. Does anybody need more time to look through the minutes? Okay. Any questions or comments on the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
None, opposed, abstained, passed unanimously. Next up, I would take a motion to approve the meeting minutes of June 4th, 2019.
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second. Does anybody need more time to read through? Okay. Any questions or comments on the minutes from June 4th? Seeing none, I, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, motion passes unanimously. Next, I would take a motion to approve the minutes of June 4th, 2019 of the Finance Subcommittee.
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second. Anyone need more time to read those? Any questions or comments on those minutes? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, passes unanimously. I would take a motion to accept the bills and payroll warrants as presented.
So moved.
I have a motion and I have a second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, passed unanimously. Okay. Next up, we have appearances. We have the student representative. Both of our student reps happen to be with the Clayton Lane Volunteer Program in Florida this week volunteering with Give Kids of the World, so they are not here to present us with any information. And I would like to ask the committee if it's okay with the committee that we move public input first before we go with our business. Does anyone have any issues with that? Do I need a formal motion? Do I need a formal motion? No, good. Okay. So we'll go with public input. First off, I would like to say that thank you to everyone who has emailed, I know myself, I believe my fellow committee members, with questions, comments, concerns, and input. We encourage you and we're taking all of your questions, comments, and concerns under advisement as we go through the process. Our public input period, we have 12 minutes scheduled for that. We typically allow up to three minutes for a person or group to come up and present. And we're going to try and stick, we have a lot of things to get through on our agenda, so we're going to try and stick to that timeframe so that we can conduct our business. If anyone, oop, hold on, one of the notes I made myself, and only items on the agenda can be discussed, so if there's anyone who would like to have any public input, please feel free to come down to the microphone and identify yourself and where you live and we'll listen to what you have to say.
My name is Kate Fulton. I live on Bridge Street and I've just come from the Selectmen's meeting. I was hoping that Select Woman Haley Brooks would be here and I'm surprised she's not because I wanted...
She's right behind you.
Are you? You look different, but that's good. You're looking good. That came, I know, that came out wrong. I made it sound like you. She doesn't hear, but I'm so pleased, actually, I'm really pleased.
Well, thank you very much, Kate.
Because you could have some questions for me. Anyway, what I'm concerned about in particular, obviously, we have more than a half million dollar deficit when it comes to the school budget. And I'm just wondering how folks are planning on resolving the issue or if they have any input as to how to resolve the issue. But the other thing is, and I don't, and I want to make sure I'm clear on this, is that Select Woman Diane Haley Brooks, I've read in the paper and I've read things on Facebook and I want to make sure I'm not misunderstanding, but there's been talk about leaving the district. That is, I'm assuming that would mean telling Phillipston that they were no longer part of Narragansett and I'm wondering, it's not very practical not to be part of a regional school district because the state does give certain financial advantages to towns that are part of a district. That's been encouraged for years as far as I know. So I wanted some clarification on that. I wondered if it's being considered and what people are thinking. Does it make any sense for this to be only, you know, not part of a region or have I misread or misunderstood something from either the paper or Facebook or wherever I may have read it? So there was two questions.
Okay. Well, this is public input, so we typically don't take questions.
Oh, okay.
And also the fact that those questions would most likely, especially the second one, need to be directed to the Select Board and to Ms. Haley Brooks herself if you wanted to ask her, but not during our open meeting here.
Okay.
So I really, we don't comment normally during public input at this point.
Okay. I was at the Select meeting. They did tell me that Select Woman Haley Brooks would be here and that's why I came over. But, and what about the gap in the school budget, the half, or half million dollars plus?
Again, we don't take questions. We listen to your input and then we will conduct our business meetings, so we don't answer questions.
All right. Well, I'll just make one comment and one thing is that repeatedly the school district asks for overrides, year after year after year. And I understand that if they go over their two and a half percent, then the override money that's requested has to be given to the school and, you know, possibly other places in town. But I'm very sad and I've heard a lot of comments from all sorts of people that every year this pits the school district against the townspeople and we've just got to stop that. It is not good enough. We've got to make people, both the school, I think you do understand, I'm not suggesting you don't, but, you know, the parents, but also the people of the town. I know that the COA, there have been questions about their financial stability and recommendations for how they might run their department differently than they do and that includes running it on a strictly volunteer basis, which I, again, I can't see that being terribly practical. But I just wanted, you know, I've just been reading this stuff and I'm concerned and I just wanted my input. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Excuse me. I'm sorry you didn't recognize me. Eric needs to get by.
Good evening. I'm Eric Iben. I both live in town and I teach in the district. And as I've been watching town comments and listening to debates as a teacher, I just wanted the school committee to know that 15 years I've been here and the best thing about teaching at Narragansett Regional are the students. We have some fantastic kids from all walks of life and all backgrounds, from Phillipston and Templeton. It's a great student body. We absolutely love teaching these kids. We do it with very few resources. Almost every teacher I work with uses their own money to supply everything from paper and pencils to fans to cool the rooms to all the materials the kids use when they do projects or activities. We spend an enormous amount of time, both in school and outside of school, preparing lessons and preparing information and preparing our students for a world in which they can be active participant members. And although I had sort of personally hoped that the district had stuck with the original number, I definitely understand why you made the cuts that you made to kind of show some good faith to both towns. I hope that the district doesn't make any more cuts because I know we have lost some seriously good young talent to the cuts. And my only point for people to consider would be is, in previous years when it's been this tight, the district at an administration level, all the unions together, everybody took their share, burden of that burden. And I just want to advocate for the teachers that if you do need to cut another half a million dollars, I honestly don't know where there is. I've said this on town floor, we don't have enough eyes in the building as it is. When you've got several hundred kids, now if you take the middle and high, so now we're talking 750 kids walking around, you need eyeballs on them for their safety. And the more we cut, the less eyes there are in the halls, the less eyes there are in the classrooms. It's challenging. And as the numbers go up, it's one thing to put 30 kids in a classroom, now give them 16-year-old sized bodies. Picture what that looks like in a room that's not that big. And just consider whatever you can do to take as few steps of cutting any more staff as you can. And we'll continue to support you as a staff and give the best education to these kids in these towns because they deserve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I think we have time for one more, so thank you, Christine.
Hello, Christine Bennett. You've all heard from me several times since the idea of reconfiguring the schools came up last year. You know, I'm from Phillipston and we want to preserve our school period. But I also spoke for the many Templeton parents I know who want all their children to attend their new building for which they voted and are paying and which is much closer to their homes. We are a district, but one made up of two towns, not one single city. The wishes of the residents of both communities must be taken seriously. I trust that you've all now seen the articles in the newspapers and heard from many more residents from both towns, most speaking against the reconfiguration and now even mulling changing or leaving the district. This one vote, this one decision is what is causing this turmoil. This change has been presented as a necessary solution to the budget crisis, but I have asked what the dollar amount being saved actually is and received no concrete answer. With both buildings open, the operating costs for each remain almost the same. Personally, I can't even say what would be an acceptable amount of savings to warrant this upheaval in all our students' lives, but as of now, it's completely out of proportion to the consequences. Please also consider this, especially those of you from Phillipston. The Baldwinville and TC students have known for three years that a new school is being built for them. They've had a long time to look forward to it, watch it being built, and even had a nice planned goodbye to their buildings. Phillipston students and parents found out one week before the end of school that the committee decided to pursue this plan this fall. Every student in Phillipston Memorial believed they were going to have at least one more year there. Every parent thought so as well and rightfully so because this major change, though it had been discussed in the past, should not have been sprung on them with no real warning. The budget will always be contentious and problematic, but this one vote will have serious and long-lasting detrimental effects. Phillipston has run its own elementary school since 1790 and this one vote will destroy that tradition and its legacy. It's become trite to say, but I believe it to be true, that this will completely alter our town identity. And for what? You've been given a second chance to take a stand for what is right, what your residents want, and what our children deserve. Please take this opportunity to reconsider your choice, else, as you've seen in the newspapers, other wheels may be set in motion and you'll have to go back to the drawing board anyway.
Thank you. I will, one more if we have anyone else who would like to speak.
Good evening. I'm Diane Haley Brooks of the Templeton Select Board. So I didn't necessarily come to speak tonight. I came because the board asked me to come, but I am going to speak. So I agree with Christine. I don't understand why Templeton students are going to Phillipston and we'd all, the people that I've spoken with, would like to know why and where is the cost savings in that. We are paying for a school here that we built in town and our students need to stay here, period. We have a pre-K through five school and that's where they belong, is where we're paying taxes. And Phillipston belongs, keeps their school to themselves and that's, I'm going to advocate for that. I don't know how the rest of my board feels, but that's how I feel personally. We also, I understand that our children here, and I've always advocated for this school, and again, I'm speaking for myself, not for the rest of my board, except for this, we're asking you to resharpen your pencil because we've had to resharpen ours. We were told that it would be about $248,000 worth of cuts and that's exactly what we did. And now it's to the tune of almost a half a million dollars. We're going to have to decimate departments to the tune of public safety. Public safety, that's for all of us, including our students. We can't afford to cut any more public safety. We're going to have to do away or not hire another police officer? Well, that affects you as a school committee, that affects our board, and that affects our students. We have a DARE officer who already has to be out on patrol. The DARE officer belongs here in the school, not out on patrol all the time. So now we have to cut some of ALS and we have an agreement with the state. How are we going to meet those needs? So we are asking for you to sharpen your pencil yet again. So it's just like we have to sharpen ours. We know that we're going to have to come with more than 248, but a half a million? I don't know how we're going to do it. I don't know how, we have to put our heads together and figure out a way to do this. So I'm asking for that to be done again. My whole board is asking for that to be done yet again. I don't know how to accomplish that goal without your help and without our help. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Let's moving on. We are going to go into our ongoing business. We have the business managers' reports. Ms. Geister has prepared reports as usual. Is there, are there any questions for Emery at this point in time on the reports themselves? And we'll get to line item transfers later in new business, but is there anything you'd like to advise us of?
Well, there's a field trip analysis a couple of months ago. It was an ASO. I don't know if you guys have a chance to look at that, but it's pretty detailed. If you didn't get a chance, you can look at it. We can ask questions later. It's up to you.
Is it the Dominican one?
No. No, it's the school choice revolving field trip one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So do you have any specific questions at this point? Okay. If you do, obviously, Emery loves to hear from us, so you can reach out. All right. Next up, superintendent goals and indicators for FY '20. We had hoped to be able to take a vote on these, but we are going to pass over on the vote. Dr. Kazivant has worked on putting the goals together. The academic, the administrative Subcommittee has not had a chance to delve into them and get them back out to the committee for further review. So what we will do when Mrs. Trifilo gets back, she and Mrs. Kozel and myself on that Subcommittee will come up with a date in the next few weeks, hopefully, and get with Dr. Kazivant and work through those and then get them out to the boards that we can vote on the goals for the August meeting. I think at the administrative leadership meeting that Dr. Kazivant had, he did share with those of us who were there what he's looking at, so we've got a preview of it. It seemed to be on the right track. We'll get more into the details. FY '20 budget update. We have a few items on this one that we need to address. The first I'm going to bring up, it was not on the agenda specifically, and I'm going to bring it up under here, almost as its own item though, is the board has received an open meeting law complaint and we need to deal with that. But I'd like to just go back and let everybody know where this began and where we are and how we'll respond, or options to respond. We received on June 20th, I had received from Mr. Terenzini, the town administrator for Templeton, a letter that said that, and this is all, I think, online, if you guys haven't had a chance to read it, that last night the Select Board considered the NRSD School Committee's June 4th vote to recertify its FY '20 budget and the conditions under which that vote occurred. The Select Board believes that the NRSD School Committee's June 4th meeting was not posted in conformity with the open meeting law and that any action taken at that meeting, including the vote to recertify, is invalid. Specifically, the NRSD failed to post notice of its meeting on the town of Templeton's website. MGL Chapter 30A, Section 20C states in part, "For meetings of a local public body, notice shall be filed with the municipal clerk as posted in a matter conspicuously visible to all public at all hours in or on the municipal buildings in which the clerk's office is located for meetings of a regional school district. The Secretary of the Regional School District Committee shall be decided to be its clerk and shall file a notice with the clerk of each city or town within such district and shall post the notice in the matter prescribed for local public bodies." Therefore, the Select Board hereby requests the NRSD School Committee vote again to recertify its FY '20 operating budget at a properly posted meeting. Further, I am instructed to advise you that the Select Board will consider the statutory time for it to hold the special town meeting to commence upon such a vote. Feel free to contact me. After looking into the matter, because that was not an official complaint, this was just a letter to us, I did respond to Mr. Terenzini stating that we received your letter dated June 20th regarding our June 4th, 2019 recertification of the NRSD school budget in which the Templeton Board of Selectmen claims that the School Committee's June 4th, 2019 meeting was not posted in conformity with the open meeting law and that, therefore, the budget recertification vote at that meeting is invalid. The School Committee believes that its posting of the June 4th, 2019 committee, meeting is in compliance with the open meeting law's notice posting requirements and treats the June 4th vote to recertify its FY '20 budget as valid and effective. Should the town elect to file an actionable complaint with the Attorney General's Office, the district will respond accordingly. We did then receive an official open meeting law complaint form from, it was, came from Town Council, Thomas Harrington with Mayoris and Harrington LLP, and he filed on behalf of, as the attorney for the Templeton Board of Selectmen. He makes a complaint against our Regional School District School Committee and the date of the alleged violation, of course, was June 4th, 2019. The description of the alleged violation, he did have a page of information and I believe everybody has seen this, again, just stating that we didn't post in conformity. He references the CMR, 940 CMR 29034, that further defines the posting requirements for regional school districts and authorizes an alternative posting method, which is Letter B. Regional School District Committee may, by majority vote, adopt the Regional School District website and he lists out his complaint. So that was attached to this. The action that he wants the public body, which would be us to take in response to the complaint, was the Templeton Select Board hereby asserts that the NRSD School Committee must vote again to recertify its FY '20 operating budget at a properly posted meeting. So in conformity with the open meeting laws, the chair must disseminate the complaint to the members of the public body, which I had disseminated after I received that. And the next step is that we must meet to review the complaint within 14 business days. So again, we received this, I think, two days ago, so we're meeting quickly to get this resolved. After our review, so that we know what our steps would be, we have to respond to the complaint in writing and we must send that response to the Attorney General with a copy of the complaint and a description of any action the public body has taken to address it. At the same time, the board must send the complaint in a copy of its response. The public body may delegate this responsibility of creating its response to its council or a staff member, but only it has met, after it has met to review the complaint. So that is where we stand. We need to, as a committee, decide how we want to respond to this. As I said, we've kind of reviewed our data and found it looks to be complete, that we are not in violation. So does anybody have thoughts on how they would like to proceed at this point?
Yes. Give to council.
Okay. Is that a motion?
I would, I motion that we need to give this complaint to council and ask them to respond accordingly.
I have a second on that. Any discussion on that?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear her. I'm hearing it there.
Yeah, that's fine. I'm sorry. We are motioning to send this to our council to respond back. Okay. And I have, had a second. Any comments? No? Okay. So all in favor of having our council draft our response and then presenting it as published here by the procedure, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, so unanimous. Dr. Kazivant, would you alert council that we are requesting her to work on our response? Obviously, I would be available, as would any other member of the board if we'd be. And also, if you could just let her know too, that we know time is of the essence, so if she could expedite that, that would be appreciated.
Will do.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Second update on FY '20 budget. I've been asked by a few people, so I just thought I'd bring it up here. When is the Templeton Special Town Meeting taking place? There is nothing on their website stating when that would be. I did see information that the Advisory Committee posted about potentially on the 18th with a pre-town meeting on the 11th, but there's nothing official out there as to dates and whatnot, so. And then the last piece on the FY '20 budget is to discuss where we are and what our plans are. And I need to share some information that we just received from the MSBA that I want to share with the committee and I'm going to, excuse me, read. This comes from Diane Sullivan and Dr. Kazivant, she is...
I don't remember her title, but she does, she does all the public relations for sure. She's really the face.
Okay. With the MSBA, okay. Great. So this is addressed to Dr. Kazivant. Superintendent, thank you for the information provided to date regarding the Templeton Center School. The MSBA looks forward to understanding further the options under consideration by the district with questions regarding materials received to date, developing and additional questions likely once we learn more about the latest option under consideration. Subject to ongoing conversation, please note that options that include unused classroom space may be subject to cost recovery by the MSBA. We look forward to working with the district to understand more. Signed, Diane Sullivan.
Superintendent, she is the Senior Capital Project Manager for the MSBA.
Thank you for that clarification. So I wanted to share that with the committee as we think through our decisions and have that out there as information we have to consider and not lightly. The other thing that you have that was passed out is there had been a few questions to look at what it would mean to leave the grades configured as it would be and what it meant not only financially, but also from a student perspective. And Dr. Kazivant and his staff has worked very hard to put some information together for us. Excuse me, I'm sorry. On that, so everyone has in front of them just some information, talking about, we're calling this Plan H. It would have pre-K and kindergarten back in the Templeton Center Elementary School. The caveat is that instead of four classrooms at grades one to five, there would be three classrooms at each grade level. The fourth classroom at each grade level, K to five, would be located at the Phillipston Elementary School as previously designed. So in summary, basically, it just goes through what our class sizes would look like and we could talk more about that in detail. It's all in front of you right here. But I do want to highlight, they've done a really good job at putting the pros and cons of this plan together that we also need to consider in relation to the decisions we've made. Just pros, we don't need to change the busing plan and I know Mrs. Geister would probably really like that. We won't need to stagger teacher schedules, pre-K, pre-K and K starts late, most of them start late, do busing. True to the original new building plan, except few of them... True to the original new building plan, except few classes per grid at this point. It satisfies certain constituencies, and it's more amenable to the MSBA plan. And obviously, hearing this email, that even makes that statement untrue. Some of the cons, is keeping grade level teachers together is educationally sound. It has been documented well that keeping our grade level teachers together is beneficial for not just the teachers, but the students. Most teacher leaders will be in PMS. The teachers are not together by grade level to collaborate routinely and regularly and academically. This is a big downside, and, you know, when we look at academic achievement, which is our main focus, this is something that we have to consider, not lightly. PMS, grade level teachers cannot plan a walk-to model for intervention if they are not all in the same building. And I don't know if you want to explain maybe that a little bit better, because I don't really understand what that means.
Well, is Kate here?
Yeah.
Kate, do you want to talk about that just real quick?
Yep. So, at a grade level, an intervention model, for example, if you had under, if you have struggling students in grade three, right, and you have four teachers in the building, you can plan the interventions based on particular students' skill deficits and needs, and the kids walk to, it's called a walk-to model. So they, you know, a student with a, who's struggling with X, would go to this teacher, and a student who's struggling with Y, would go to that teacher, during an intervention block. And who, you don't have all the teachers together, that would be criticized.
Anybody have any questions on that, for?
Do we currently do that now?
We currently do it in...
Where we can.
Where we can, but we can't, we can't have that model in Phillips and Form, last grade level, because there aren't other teachers to walk to.
Anybody else have any questions or comments on that? Obviously, there's moving considerations, teacher adjustments to yet another plan. PMS students are with the same 25 or so students for six years. Fifth grade is three classes, 30 or more, and we have to really think about what that means, and what we might need to do for that fifth grade class, which obviously does not fit into a budget that doesn't have that planned. Common planning at the elementary level will be slightly shorter due to travel, which was one of the big pluses of putting all the teachers together. Again, it is so beneficial for those teachers to be able to just immediately get to work when they have that limited timeframe. What is our average, is it 45, 46 minutes?
So, in the new contract, students will have contemplating time after school in elementary grades, which is an hour, but, you know, that'll be, that'll become 45 minutes or some less than a month.
Teacher-to-teacher observations are something we're trying to promote, but this will be hampered. Difficulty allocating Title I resources and personnel, and Title I is the federal monies that we get to address needs. Will not be, we will not be adding new school choice kids to the elementary, that's a question mark, we need to, that's obviously something that we need to discuss. And the other thing is, in order to balance out classrooms, because equity is huge, we need to ensure that our classrooms are not burdened in one town or the other, is that we would potentially need to move 34 school choice students involuntarily to Phillips and from Templeton. And there's a risk associated with that, because just because they're school choice, one, doesn't mean that they don't know each other, and they're not already embedded into the classrooms with the peers that they have. So moving them to PMS could be socially difficult, as we know, kids have adjustment periods. And it all took a cause, those choice students, to leave the district, and that's a financial concern. With that amount of kids, it's about $170,000. So that's, that's a big number for us to have to consider. If choice students leave, the class sizes will again be inequitable. And then we come back to, you know, how do we tell a child who's a resident of Templeton that when every other resident in Templeton, the students are going to Templeton Center, that, you know, well, to balance a classroom, we'd have to move you. That's, that's not really what we need to be in the business of doing. So those were the cons to this particular model. I will throw it out for comments and questions from the committee at this point.
I have just one question.
Were the first graders mentioned?
We are, this is...
I must have missed something?
It's pre-K to five in Templeton, K to five in Phillips, that's, that was...
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, that's okay.
One question.
I didn't hear her either.
Would there be a benefit to having grade five with Templeton and Phillips and children all together in Templeton Center?
So you're saying if we moved the fifth grade classroom, instead of moving fifth grade back to both of the schools, to move them back singularly to one school? And obviously, Templeton Center would be where that would have to be, because it actually has space.
Right.
I, it's a good question. I know, I would throw that back to maybe Dr. Kazivan, who's nicer to think about, maybe busing, I don't know what, if they have anything off the top of their head.
Well, we'd be talking about Plan I, but I would have to, you know, we'd have to look at that, I mean, I'd have to look at, we know what the, we know what the numbers would be, they're still going to be very high in terms of the classes, class size.
You'd also have to, you'd also have to consider the busing. But that, that being said, that does only impact nine Phillips and kids.
Right, right. We'd have to, I don't, right off the top of my head, I can't think of any auxiliary staff that goes with the fifth grade. It would probably, it might wobble the schedule a bit, seeing that we'd have three, 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 and then four. So I'd have, I'd have to talk with Saltis, to see how that would literally play out, I don't know. Answer.
What would that do for us? What difference does that make?
Yeah, what benefit?
Putting all the fifth grades, what difference does that really make in Templeton?
Well, it would just even out the classrooms, so that's not 30 and 25.
So they'd be all like 28, I don't know if that makes a, I don't know if that, I don't think that that much of a difference would, more that change, yeah. That's just my opinion.
Yeah, I think, and honestly, it's a very good thought, because it would, but it still only lowers the average class size to 30 overall, or maybe 29 point something. I think we have, personally, I think we have bigger issues with fifth grade that we have to address, then we'll have to have those discussions. So I don't, as far as, I don't know how we do it, but we need to talk about.
But that's the other thing, if we're going to add another, if we consider adding another teacher, it would be nice to have them all together.
Okay.
It'd be nice to have them all together anyway, but, I'm just saying, all grades.
If, Madam Chair, if you, if you add another fifth grade teacher, you're going to have to then consider taking the fifth grade, which are roughly 11 school choice children off the list, off the waitlist, or pick them in, and then spread them out, because it'll drop, it would drop the per pupil to say 22. And that's rough math, I'm sure, somebody else is calculating. But you'd, you'd want to bring it back up to around some equity. I wouldn't, you wouldn't bring it up to 28 or 27, which you'd probably need that to help offset. Remember, there's no mechanism in order to pay the fifth grade teacher. So it's not, it's not hard to find a fifth grade teacher, it's, there's no mechanism to pay.
Okay. Can I just maybe throw this out there? Doesn't need any comments, but 13 or so years ago, town of Phillips had one class that had a whole bunch of kids in it, and they paid for an extra teacher out of the stabilization fund. It was free cash, and it's a one-time expense, because the next year it may not be needed.
Right. Well, the other thing that is...
It wouldn't be a six-figure bill, it's take it out of our free plan.
We don't have any left. We have none left. We've already pledged it all to this budget, so that's, that's, R E and D. R E and D, yeah. We've, we've spent just about every penny of it. We're leaving a very small pool to handle any type of needs we may have that come up for, especially in our special population.
Just a thought, it's something we did.
How about school choice?
Well, I think we need to have a conversation around school choice, but are we ready to get there yet? Because I think until we vet this out, and maybe come up with the decision of how we would like Dr. Kazivan to proceed, if it's changing course from what we've said, we can't address school choice until we have that done. And I've heard enough comments from people that they were looking at, and the statement from the MSBA is something, again, that we have to really consider, that plays into this. Is this the course that the committee would like to proceed in, and move from here to satisfy mostly the MSBA, but also...
Can I clarify though, on the MSBA thing? I just want to make sure everybody's aware, the MSBA, the impact is the town of Templeton, correct? It ends up, ends up with the payment, or lack of funds coming in, because they get the reimbursements.
Yeah.
Can I, there are still going to be empty classrooms there.
But many, many fewer, there'll be four, five.
Depending what we do with them, depending what we decide with the fifth grade, one in the first, one in the second, one in the third, so four, five, yeah.
Yeah, when they initially sized the building, if we go back to our initial vote, it was sized, I believe, I think it was 580 students, and doing this puts, and I asked earlier, and I've already forgotten the number, 500 and almost 40 students in the building, I think.
We're right on the target.
Exactly.
We're whoever's design.
Right, so...
We just can't fund the extra teachers.
Exactly.
Right.
So I think, it's a good point, because we can't predict what the MSBA might say, but I think they'd be less likely to look at us as having a whole floor empty versus...
Right.
Mrs. Geister, you've been quiet.
I have been quiet, because it's a very serious decision we're making. But you look at this Plan H, and it makes everybody happy, except for the class sizes. But we're opening a school in the town of Templeton for the Templeton people. However, we need, as was said before, the town of Templeton to work with us, and we thought that was happening. And we worked on this since February. And this is our Plan Eight. So we have sharpened our pencils, and we were given promises from members of the town, and they didn't come through. So I'm contemplating, it's a tough decision, I'm torn.
One, one caveat that would naturally come with this, and this is, of course, assuming all students, you know, go with their, with their slot to go, that you're talking, we're literally, every classroom, so this would include Phillips, then, first grade 28, second grade 27, third grade 27, fourth grade 28, fifth grade in between, depending, between 25 and 30. So these are numbers that are, by the way, they are consistent. And I just say that out loud, because this isn't, this isn't the original plan, right? So this isn't what the original...
Well, the original plan was to have all of the teachers, and we wouldn't be having this discussion. The reality is, is we have, we had to make cuts in order to make something more appealing to the town of Templeton. Phillips and passed its override, okay? And this was a plan we came up with. Is it painful? Absolutely. We struggled with this, because is this the best thing for our kids? No, we wanted the $1.1 million, that's what was best for our kids. But that's not what the communities let us know. So I think, regardless of configuration, those are the numbers, period. That's the budget we serve at, so, yes, I'm, you know, that, absolutely.
I just feel a little bit compelled to make a comment too, because I've seen it out there on Facebook, that our teachers are overpaid, or they should take a cut. That is not the case. We have awesome teachers who, quite frankly, don't get paid enough, and we try, we try every year in our negotiations to make sure that they're paid adequately. We compare to everybody around us, and they are not even in the middle. So I'm just putting that out there, that is not an option, in my opinion. Unfortunately, we've had to cut positions, but that's not something that should be done, or even considered. I just had to put that out there.
No, and I think you're right, because my comment to people is, we can have a philosophical discussion on how much someone should get paid, but this is market, and this is what we have to pay. And these people are worth every penny, plus more than we give to them. So this is really not even worth having a discussion about, because this is just the way it is.
And we, as elected officials, have to take the heat, and I get that, but they shouldn't. And they have, they've had a lot of it out there.
And our kids shouldn't take the heat either.
No.
I want to caution, as the dark rain cloud that I am, is to say that this does not subtract the possibility that the MSBA, even in this configuration, will not say, "Well, it's better, but you're still short four rooms." I want to, yeah, I just want to make sure that...
But the other plan had the whole first grade in the building.
Oh, yeah, in the kitchen, right.
So I think this mitigates that, having, it might be larger size, but that's just, I think they would understand that, rather than moving out the whole grade out of town, so.
I agree.
No, and I, no, and that's a point well taken, because we don't know what the MSBA will say.
We're trying to get the answer to this, but it's just...
Yeah, well, and have them put it on paper, which is where we're struggling, and that's why we are where we are, because we didn't have this written, that was not what we were being told.
And we've lost five teachers, or more?
We have lost, we have lost a total of six positions.
Six positions, so we've made those cuts.
Yeah, and in order to, going back to February, when we started talking about the positions that were needed, that were identified by Department of Ed, Special Education Review that we received, school psychologist, if you remember, we talked about that, intense special needs teacher, and VCPA, that type of stuff, of course, that all, that all was lost, right? Those aren't people, they didn't exist in the district, but those are positions that we've needed. What I had to do, unfortunately, is I had to lay off people in other positions in order to use that salary, so to speak, in order to be able to hire the positions that we need to hire. So there, there are positions that have absolutely been lost, so when someone says, "Well, where's the money?", that's, as of, you know, the last day of school, we had five at every grade level, K through five. And then the last day of school, on July 1, technically, there are now four. Those positions do not exist, those salaries that were assigned, and those people that were assigned, they no longer are in those positions, and that's where the savings today. But we still are, of course, $574,000 off the mark.
What happens if we get kids moving in the summer, and our enrollment increases?
Can you say, I'm sorry?
What happens if more families move into town this summer, and the enrollment increases?
Well...
Is there any money anywhere, if we had to hire another teacher?
Well, we'll be in, well, if we think the way it's going to go, we don't know that we're going to be in the 112, but seeing that the first day of July is Monday, they, MSBA called, no, not MSBA, Department of Ed, called us, and to let us know that they were discussing Narra Gansett, and all the information that we have sent along, and that we would probably expect a 112.
Something tomorrow.
Something tomorrow.
Because that is the other piece that's out there, that regardless of what we decide, when the state comes back and tells us that you're getting X, we have to react to that, because we can't tell the state, "Well, we just decided to spend what we wanted anyway." There, that's not the way that works. So we could be having a very different discussion come next week, in order to manage a 112 situation, which is why it's critical that we get a budget passed and certified. Because the other thing that it makes it extremely unfair to, and this is something I know we spent a lot of time discussing, was the, it was moral and it's ethical to be able to tell our people what their future is. And if that means if we've got to do, make other cuts to respond to the state, we cannot drag that out, we need to do that. And it really, you know, it's upsetting that we haven't been able to react, because we don't know a number, but as soon as that happens, we need to do that. These people deserve to have fair warning, which is also why we need to get this budget resolved, so that we know what number we're working with. So, does anyone want to, want me to review again where process was? I know we've done it a few times, with the next steps, or as far as budget, if it doesn't get passed, we, if you remember, we, Templeton needs to have their special town meeting. If the budget doesn't pass there, then we have a district-wide town meeting, right? And that's where we would go with that. So, but we had, need to wait for the Templeton special town meeting first, so we're kind of holding pattern on that.
Do we vote on this, on going to configuration again, or is this just not a vote?
I, I would like to ask the committee to indulge me, and I'm sure Dr. Kazivan would appreciate a firm vote on direction, because there's other things that, although they aren't, I'm going to call it material to maybe us, such as boxes that need to find their way to the right homes, and several other things that need to also happen. So I think that it would be good if we were considering this, that we do make it a formal...
I'd like to make a motion that we consider Plan H.
We consider... We consider, or we adopt Plan H.
Adopt Plan H.
Second.
And a second. So I do have a motion and a second on the floor. Mr. Mason, I saw you were going to say something, I don't know if you wanted to comment?
I was going to say, in conjunction with this, I think we should also reconvene a finance committee, just to go over the numbers again. And just, by the time the state responds, we'll have that information too, so, that's something we'll have to do anyways, so.
Okay, which after we take a vote, we'll schedule a finance subcommittee meeting again.
Can I ask you, why, if we've already certified a number, why would we move that?
It's for the 112th.
For the 112th.
Yeah. All right, so, Dr. Kazan?
I do just want to, again, one of the concerns is, when the vote, however the vote turns out, and if it should turn out to the affirmative, we are going to have to send letters to the affected 42 school choice students, 1 through 5. And, just to give you some quick, a quick rundown here, there are already 24 students, school choice students, assigned currently right now, okay? Down in Phillipsden. We would, roughly 41, 42 kids who need to be added to, to bull your balance, the numbers that we just discussed. For a grand total of 76 school choice children will be down there. So 42 don't know that yet, let's just put it that way. There'll be 68 students assigned from Phillipsden, and there'll be four Templeton intra-school choice students that interest school choice.
And those we've confirmed.
Those were confirmed, yes, we reconfirmed that yesterday. One of the cautions, although I think that we would be past a point of return, by the times we have need to send letters, we'll obviously know where folks stand, those 42 students will stand as they either accept this, accept it or just don't, just don't show up here. And I think that that would, again, I just want to make sure, that although I'm, we're using numbers that are, that are solid, right? They exist. That may look very different come September. So the reason why I'm saying that now, or it could, it could be exactly the number it is today. But I just want to caution folks to say, "Look, it may look different, say, the first day of school." And then that really begins another conversation, so I don't know, but we'll see. But I just want to make sure that we have done no verification of these students. They do not know, quite frankly, to put it, to put it bluntly.
So I think from a, you know, as we start having discussion, because school choice is not on tonight's agenda, because until we come to a decision, we can't really talk about it, that our next meeting will definitely have school choice, and I, we reconvene a finance subcommittee meeting. I think we should also schedule a regular school committee meeting at the same time, where we can address maybe school choice to decide what we may want to add in places strategically, and what that means. And then I think in August, I remember reading through the directive from the Department of Ed on how we're supposed to handle school choice, that we have an August timeframe, so we'll meet on the 14th. And we can then also make additional changes, adds, decisions based on where we are then.
To be clear, interestingly, there will be, I'm just looking real quick.
And in your, actually, in your packages, I asked Mrs. Barney to...
There won't be much of a lottery needed, because we almost will be depleting every school choice.
And that's a different, and that's a different discussion with fifth grade. And I think that we definitely need to explore that, what are the risks of if the committee looked at school choice and said, "There's 11 kids on the waitlist." Would that fund a teacher, and what are the risks of doing that? We already know you don't use school choice monies for ongoing expense, but we need to have that discussion, so I think that's, that's, yeah.
Yes.
There was a page in here for people with how many kids we have on school choice list, so it is available, for you to take a look at and start thinking about.
I just want to make sure.
No, thank you, that's very important information. Mr. Marks, you've been quiet, any comments before we actually take a vote? You don't have to.
It's tough, aren't you?
It is tough. I really don't like the class size, I don't like going up with class size. The other thing that really bothered me, I mean, we're talking about the 112th budget, okay? And that really concerns me, because even going forward here, we don't know what we're going to do. We're going to be running on this 112th budget until December?
Until budget's approved or...
Until, until budget's approved or until December. So we really need to work to get that budget approved. Even with the, even with what we put forward, we still have our $500,000 shortfall, and that really concerns me. We really need to do that. I'm very concerned about what it's going to do, when we're running on the 112th budget, we're doing all this planning, but until we get the number from, from the Board of Ed, all bets are off. I mean, we really need that number from that to see what's going on. The only other thing, you know, I do want to say is that, you know, there were some concerns about some of the numbers coming back. I just want to say that I think that this process has been very transparent. I mean, we've been open with everything that is done, we've been very open, we've had open meetings, we've had informational sessions, we encourage people to come to these sessions, we answered questions. And it's a little bit frustrating to me to hear that people don't have the information that they think they need. One of the other things that's, you know, very frustrating to me, is the fact that, I've heard some comments, I've talked to some people, and they tell me that this was a surprise, that opening the school, that this million dollar, that this million dollar shortfall was a surprise. This was not a surprise by any means, by any stretch of the imagination, it was not a surprise, okay? This is, information went out there. Templeton Center, it's been under construction for two years, okay? All of this, all this information went out, this information was pulled away, okay? I mean, that budget was pulled away when that building, when that building was closed. And it was always the intention for that building to be opened back up. So, this information has been out there, we've talked about it. So it's a little bit frustrating for me to hear, and to see on social media, that people say that this was a surprise. This was absolutely not a surprise. I don't think there's anybody out there that can say that they have come to this committee, and asked a question, and have not gotten the information. So, that's it.
Anyone else want to comment?
I just want to confirm that this H plan, so this would not allow Phillipsden and inter-school choice into Phillipsden.
Into Phillipsden to Templeton?
Right.
Yes, no?
Phillipsden to Templeton.
According to the...
Right, that's what I'm seeing anyway. So it keeps all Phillipsden children in Phillipsden, and there'll only be a small few that are going from Templeton into Phillipsden.
And those I believe were there previously, and had said they'd like to stay, so that's...
They've been there since the first grade. We actually have one Phillipsden intra-school choice student, I forget what grade at this point. Of course, you know, we're going to allow that child to stay, they've been there since the second grade, I believe, so.
But there'll be no more at this point.
There'll be no, no, there'll be no interest until we can obviously stabilize.
If it came to balancing grades, I think we'd have to, but at this point, it's not skewed that way at all, so, yes. Anybody else have a question, a comment? We had a motion on the floor, and seconded to take Plan H and adopt that as how we're going to move forward with configuring the two schools. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstained? Okay, so it passes unanimously. Mr. Mason had asked if we could reconvene the finance subcommittee, and I as well had mentioned that I would also like to schedule a regular school committee meeting, so the two of those can dovetail. Let's do that right now, so that we don't leave here and then we forget. All right. How does, is, would everybody be available maybe on July 1st? We'll start with Monday.
I'm not available that week.
At all? Okay. Is anyone else not available next week?
No.
Good, well, you're good.
It kind of depends on what day.
Okay, how about Monday, let's start with Monday.
Depends on what time.
It'll be the evening, so.
Yes, I'm available.
Okay. Mrs. Kozier, would you be available Monday? Deb, no you're not, and Vicki, you're not. Jeff, would you be available on Monday? Are you out all week as well?
No.
It's just Monday.
What about Tuesday?
I was going to say, let's try Tuesday, because I'd love, many of us, Rayanne will also be back, so I think that's good. So how about Tuesday, would that work? Yes, July 2nd? Tuesday?
What time?
Do we, could we do five? And then we'll follow up with a 6 o'clock school committee meeting? So that we could, I think, at that point, we can start talking about school choice anyway? But then on the agenda, that we can make maybe, you know, some decisions. And that would be, I think, our definite one item on the agenda, but we'll see if there's anything else that we need to do.
I think maybe 6:30, as it goes along.
Okay, so 5:00 PM on 7/2, which is Tuesday, we will have a finance subcommittee meeting.
I will be there, I will make my sister do it. She's coming up for the weekend, I'm staying on my head.
All right, and then 6:30 PM, we'll follow up with a regular school committee meeting, so we can start addressing any, anything else, and we'll get an agenda out to everybody probably by very Wednesday, so by Friday before 5:00 PM.
Should we have an answer back from?
We will, from the state by then, yeah, so that'll be the...
From the whole?
MSBA?
No.
No, the state, the 112th?
No, the management crap.
Oh, I don't know, it's going to depend on how quickly our attorney can turn it around, so. Okay, so good, those are done, and, let's see, get this out of the way, so I can see what's next on the agenda. All right. All right, we also had an out-of-state field trip to the Dominican Republic. It was a service learning trip that we heard, Mrs. DRC and Mrs. Vassal had come in, asked us if they could get just approval to go out and speak to parents, and get interest. I believe, I heard there's been about 20 kids who have signed up that want to go. So now they're looking for us to give formal approval, so that any sort of fundraising and whatnot can happen. I did want to bring, before someone even has to ask, Bridges to Community is the organization that coordinates all of these trips, this particular service learning trip for us. They obviously have all sorts of protections and whatnot, and insurances in place. They did send out an email to all of the groups that have expressed interest, and of course, we were one of them, because we needed to have a slot. They sent a notice to all the groups that the incidents that have been taking place in the Dominican, that many people have heard of, did not happen in any of the areas in the country that they visit with their volunteers. So, they, they're monitoring the situation, obviously, if that changes, and they have any issues, they would then alert us. If you recall, last year, the trip was initially to Nicaragua. Nicaragua has a bit of an issue going on, and they moved the trip to the Dominican. So I'm sure that they will take the appropriate steps to keep our children safe. If anyone is so inclined, I would take a motion to approve the NRHS Dominican Republic Service Learning Trip in February of 2020. I do have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second. Is there any comment, questions? Okay, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained, so it passed unanimously. Okay. All right. On our public comment, we typically have someone from the NDA, I don't see Mrs. Parker here, it is the summer, so I don't blame her for not being here. So there's, I don't think we have anyone who would like to speak on behalf at this point. I see Mr. Iverson there, he's like, nah. School committee comments? Do we have any comments from the school committee?
I was glad to get a lot of emails and stuff, it's amazing, because a lot of times we don't, and no one ever shows up at meetings, so, that was a good thing, I think.
I'll second that, you know, and there were varying opinions in the emails that I received. And it was appreciated, so I will definitely second your comments.
And very respectful, there wasn't, for the most part, there wasn't much blame, it was more just trying to get everyone's across my feelings and what's understood.
We appreciate that. And we encourage continued communication with us. We would love to see everybody's face out here every month, and every time we meet. And we would like any, any sort of feedback, always feel free, obviously, we're here to, for you to reach out to, so, we'd love to hear from you. I see Bridget looking at me, she's like, "I got you, bro." Any other school committee comments? I just want to comment, I think that the, the end of the school year, have we met since graduation? I don't know if we've, have we met since, yeah, we didn't meet, but we didn't talk about it. We didn't really even talk about it. We had a class that graduated, and it was a fabulous, fabulous ceremony. The kids, what a great class. We had three, the valedictorian and the two soliditorians, and the class president gave fabulous speeches. It was a wonderful, wonderful evening of celebrating their successes. And I cannot wait to hear more from what they do, so I was, I was really pleased with, with end, we got to use the new bleachers. So that was exciting too, and it wasn't even a really super hot day, so. And I think, you know, other than that, I think, I know there was a lot of things and events that went on at the end of the year, that again, we were kind of focused on other things. And I just want to give a big shout out to, we had band concerts, we had all sorts of things happening in the school. We had a beautiful art show, that I don't even know if we formally recognized, because we've been a bit preoccupied. And I feel bad for that, because these are the things that we should be focusing on, and letting people know about. We have a lot of great things that happen in these halls, we need to keep that up, so. All right, new business. I'm going to, we do have one item that came after our agenda setting period, and I'd like to address that first. Mrs. Barney, do we have the copy of that letter from the donation?
Yes.
Okay, I just, I got to find it, because I meant to print it, and I forgot. We received, if you can find it, I will even have you read it to the... There was no place to put it on our agenda, because there's no item for it, so I had nowhere to attach it for you. It is out in our shared drive, and Mrs. Barney will let us know what it says. Yep, Deb, let's start, yep. At least you know where to look.
This was a letter from Cornerstone Church in Washington. It was sent to Ed Andrejic. Dear friends at NRSD, I hope you're well, enjoying summer finally. I just wanted to take this moment to thank you and the entire faculty and staff of the NRSD for all that you do so tirelessly. It is not overlooked and is still very appreciated. Thank you for serving families in our area so faithfully. In closing, a check of $1,000. Our pledge was to help with the accounts of the school meals program for either this school year, 2018-19, or pay it forward to the 2019-20 school year. As I have stated to Dr. Cassman, Ms. Vassal, Mr. Vancilett, Cornerstone Church is committed to doing all the we can to continue to support the mission and vision of the care of students and families of the North Central district county. It by me, invite me to let you know, one lady in our church decided to not have any Dunkin' Donuts cookies for the entire summer, and wrote a check for $200. One man gave $100, who attended NRHS as a student more than 25 years ago. The people of Cornerstone Church are truly behind you and supporting you. Thank you for allowing us to be a part of that monumental task and powerful change. The summer will afford the coming, the coming years of friendship. And then a little handwritten note to the secretary, it's like, "Ed, thank you for being an unsung hero in this world. If you ever need anything, please reach out, no questions." And it was to lead classroom.
She gave him a Dunkin's?
Yeah.
So everybody hear that? So I would need a motion to accept that donation? I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion? The only thing I would say is, can you draft a thank you letter? I will sign it on behalf of the committee, and we can send that out to them, because that is very generous. I will sign it on behalf of the committee and we can send that out to them because that is very generous and.
We should put a Dunkin's gift card in there, too.
All right, any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor? I opposed, abstained, and voted unanimously. And thank you again to Cornerstone Church. That is just phenomenal, and we so appreciate it. We do have on our agenda the district agreement. Oh, I'm sorry, another donation?
It's not donations.
That'll come on the correspondence. Yep, we'll get to that. Yep, so our new business, the district agreement. In our district agreement, section 12 has assignment of pupils. That if the assignment of students results in more than 10% of the pupils of the whole school being from out of town, then the reassignment shall require a 7/8 school committee vote in favor. So-called school choice students shall be exempt from this requirement. I know we just motioned to change the configuration around what should not lead to this problem. But what we haven't addressed is the 112 situation. And that highly concerns me is we need to be able to react quickly to whatever the state may throw at us. My concern is if we don't act on this tonight to allow the superintendents and leeway if they needs to move a few people and all of a sudden, I think you said we had, how many students in Phillipston? K to, K to five?
With the new?
Yeah, with the new.
With the new configuration.
Fifty-eight? No, just the Phillipston residents, 58?
Yes.
Okay, so that means if we have six, if we have six Templeton students in that Phillipston building, we're over the 10% mark. So I, I think we need to address this so that we will have the flexibility to be able to respond. I will, I would be comfortable if we wanted to push this off to our next meeting to actually discuss if people would like to do that once we have. You'd like to get it done?
So are we, are we, what is the?
We would motion to allow more than 10% of one town, towns, residents of the other towns.
So are we giving a percentage or are we just?
No, it is, this calls 10%, so we would, I mean, we could motion anything we want. We don't have to put a percentage. We could, but we tie our hands if we, if we do. Again, it's the will of the committee here, so if someone wanted to make a motion, we could certainly explore.
The other option was to suspend it?
Well, suspend, it's all the same thing. No, we can't because it's a regional agreement item. We have to go through the amendment process. We're basically suspending that 10%. It's semantics. You suspend it, we allow more than 10%, it's the same thing. So whatever, however someone wants to word it, and a, a motion, if someone wants to, we can address it and then decide the will of the committee if we are going to pass that or not, and we'll see where we go.
I still think it's a little premature until we have at least a finance meeting. I mean, we don't have all the information to make a good decision.
Can we do it at that meeting on the second?
Well, I would take, to make it formal, I'd take a motion to pass over the signing. I have a motion to pass over to the second.
Second.
And I do have a second. Any comments? All in favor? I opposed.
Aye.
Abstained. So it was not unanimous, but the motion did pass. I will place this on the next agenda so that we can revisit and, and we'll look at it then. Next up is the FY19 line item budget transfers. The school committee must approve any line item transfers between the major accounts. That would be the, that summary sheet that Anne Marie does for us, so one pager. And we have three accounts that have, are a little bit in the red, and I know there's some various budgeting reasons that that happened. We would need to give her approval to move monies from one of the other accounts into those to balance books. Mrs. Geister, what is your recommendation?
I would recommend that you move $65,000 from operations and maintenance to the fixed charges, the fixed assets, debt retirement, and the tuition lines to cover those deficits.
Can we say so move?
And if you wanna so move it?
So move it.
I have a so moved. Do I have a second? Do I have a second? Do I have any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? I opposed, abstained, motion carries unanimously. Okay, surplus items. We have two pages of surplus items that we need to vote on. First, we have some items from the Boldenville Elementary School that have been surplused. We have a double-door freezer. We have a double-door refrigerator. We have a single-door refrigerator. We have a double convection electric oven and 12 cafeteria tables. And remember that everything in the new building is new, so we do not need these. And I believe that I asked initially that, obviously, we don't need these in any of our other sites at this point. So I would entertain a motion to identify these items as surplus. I have a motion. Do I have a, have a first? Do I have, yeah, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second. Any discussion?
No, we're gonna just, are we selling it?
It's offered out first to any of the town agencies first, that's the first step. And then after that, we would then, we went through this process when TC was, was demolished. Then there's a process in which it's put out, basically, we open, we have to, we have to post it for two weeks and then allow people to look at it, et cetera. And then after that, you know, after that, I guess you throw it away. I mean, but I don't think these items will make it much past, we've already had interest.
The town.
Yeah, the town.
Good, that's good. It would be nice if we can do that. Any other questions?
Yeah, they can stay where they are for right now, sure, absolutely, until they can get them. We'll charge whoever wants them, you know, fee, because that's what we do.
You don't just put them out in the front.
Yeah, we're just gonna put them on.
That's what I do with my stuff. All right, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor? I opposed, abstained, passes unanimously. We have one other surplus item. This would be for 126 Algebra I textbooks that we no longer utilize. I would entertain a motion to put these out for surplus.
So move.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second. Any questions? Can we put these in the refrigerator?
We have several children who'd like to bring these home, so. As soon as we, you know, I'm lying.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor? I opposed, abstained, and we have a unanimous vote to dispose of those books. I think we made some students probably very happy getting rid of those books. School handbook, this was put out there. I don't know if everyone's really had a chance to go through and have know. What I'd like to do, Dr. Kaz, again, obviously, by the August 14th timeframe, we have to vote since this will be handed out. Who should we direct? I noticed most of this was the high school that had changes.
Yes, so if, if you remember, the, the actual handbook, the first 200 pages roughly, are the standard, the, that's vetted as, and it goes for all buildings. The appendices are the individual schools. So the high school had a couple of very minor changes. So I don't believe, I have to, I have to say, I don't know about the elementary handbook because that has to be changed, and I, and I don't know if Ms. Altis, I just don't know if she responded back. So I would appreciate the, she's a little busy with the body.
I can't imagine why.
So if, if we could give her, you know, we could.
Yeah, that would be great. If you wanna forward that out to everybody, as well as if Mrs. Gilson now has any changes.
That's right. So now this actually changes. I'm glad that we didn't because we would have had to recover them and change something else.
Okay. If we have questions, like I did have a whole, because you know me, I'm to read the, I have a whole bunch of comments on the high school piece. Who should, should we send them directly to Mrs. Vassal?
Yes, yes, that would be fantastic.
And then we'll do the same with, when you send the, the elementaries will, and then the same with middle school as well. I guess we probably need to ask the front here to also let us know if there's changes, so. Yes. Mrs. Vassal will handle the high school, and then each of the principals in the other buildings, so. All right, school improvement plans. We usually like to take a look at these. I know, obviously, school's out and the site councils need to get together. I know they did a lot of work on these. I would just like to say, could we get them on the agenda maybe in October to, to review as a committee, just to go over?
Absolutely. Again, going back to the discussion, my evaluate, or my goals, remember the strategic plan drives everything. So they are waiting patiently for that to be, which we did a lot of work during our two-day session. So really, we're just, we're just organizing that information and that should just open up for everything else. So to answer your question directly, yes, October would be fantastic because that'll set the stage for everyone else.
Great, superintendent's report. I don't know if you had anything else to add that you wanted to?
Just, just real quick, you know, we've been consumed with, of course, the budget since December, February. I will say to you that whether or not we're talking about education or we're talking about widgets, you, it's a standard that you are, you see a person's real character when other, either under duress or stress or strain. And we've seen a lot of that the last four months. Some of it, quite frankly, has been disappointing. Some of the rhetoric and nonsense that has come my way via multiple platforms is, is, well, it was concerning. But that's not what this venue is for. But what I will say, that on the other side of things, you know, my teachers are fantastic. They literally, without exaggeration, have not known where they were going to teach, whom they were going to teach, and if, many of them did not know if they had a job up until three days before the last day, well, this third week of June, the second week of June. And I don't know, I don't know if, if there is any other group that could have handled that, quite frankly, with as much professionalism as they have. If there are, congratulations, then they're something special. But what we have here is something special. I don't really, I don't really give a lot of praise to my administrative team, quite frankly, at least in public. They just don't deserve it, that's why normally. But they, I will tell you, from the central office.
That was sarcasm, if anybody didn't.
Biting sarcasm. They know, they, but that administrative team has had to reset on several occasions. Have had to have several difficult conversations, retract, and then have them again in some cases. We are moving boxes, we are doing a lot of different things. Rick is here. You know, he is the captain of the ship in terms of the move, which has been, which has been unbelievable. So I, I say this because if you question, truthfully, either the integrity or, you know, or the well-being, or where their, where their thought process is in terms of my staff, you know, it is right exactly where it should be, and I'm very proud of them. I, I couldn't be prouder. They really have stayed above the fray, and they've kept their mind to the kids. And some claim to have done that, or at least acting that in that manner. I can say that my staff actually, in fact, improved by acting in that manner. So I wanted to take this opportunity to thank them publicly. They have been fantastic, and we're very lucky.
We are, because by their rising to all of the challenges they faced, not that we've had it easy, but it has made our job easier, knowing that we have such a great staff. Your administrative team, down to every person who steps foot in this building to help our kids. So, yeah, it's, we are truly fortunate.
We like it, we like it.
Anyone else wanna comment on that stuff?
I just, I was thinking that we have better teachers.
It was fun working with them, too, last week at the retreat.
Yes.
And we learned, yeah, they were, that was nice.
Okay, so, next up is the FY21 budget calendar because we have to start talking FY21. We had put together the draft schedule to put out there for everybody. I really didn't hear any comments back saying that the schedule wasn't gonna work for anyone. So that schedule will become final now. We did also, on that listing, put out the, the budget finance meetings. We will continue as a committee of the whole. We'll kick off October 16th at 4:45 in central office. And then we will have, prior to each monthly meeting, like we did this time at 5 o'clock here, in January, we meet in Phillipston, and in February, we meet in Akiva. And actually, I did wanna throw out something and maybe Dr. Kaz, and you and Mrs. Varney in particular, can think about is, it would be nice to maybe have a meeting in our new building in Templeton. We have one, just to, to move one for the Akiva meetings there. I think it would be nice to, to broadcast from there. So if we can figure out how to, how to make that work.
That'd be awesome.
Yeah, maybe even, because the other thing is that we need to do is we also had some, some tribe board meetings on there. There are two of them scheduled, and we need to just reach out to the towns now and let them know this is the dates that we've kind of put in, see if that works for them. And I was wondering if we could ask Mrs. Varney to send something to both towns to see if they would be able to do that. We had, just, it's funny, I was looking on our schedule. We, the first date we had put out there was Monday, October 28th. That led us meet first, and then we would lead into that. The second one was Wednesday, January 29th. But all the boards meet on Wednesdays, so I don't know why we didn't do that Monday, the 27th. So I would recommend we make it Monday, the 27th. And then the other piece of it is, we have it at 6 o'clock. And I know we've done a lot of those meetings at 5:00. Some of it was driven because the other boards were meeting later and we wanted to get the meeting early, so 5:00 or 6:00 o'clock. And again, we can be flexible with our time if everybody just puts those two dates on the calendar until we hear something. So if you would reach out and find out if the 28th of October and the 27th of, of January.
Well, we have to have FY20's budget done first.
Well, we still gotta go. I mean, this is, unfortunately, we have to, you know, yes, but. And if we have to push off, we push off, but we, we need to, yeah, I know.
Last one.
Yes.
The October 28th, are you saying that one to be in the new building?
I'm, I'm not sure, so we'll get back to you on the wares. Yeah. But maybe that might, as I said, that might be a nice.
We're gonna take it.
We'll get to your title. It'd probably be the 5 or 6. Yeah, and then it'll be Monday, the 27th of January, so it's gonna be 10:28 and 1:27.
But when? What day is the 28th of October?
It's a Monday. We'll celebrate.
Yes.
Okay, next up, we have our subcommittee reports. Academic Administrative, Rayanne isn't here, so we really don't have an update. But we did mention that as a committee, our next, subcommittee, our next meeting will be to finalize the superintendent's goals and indicators and whatever else we need to put on the agenda. So we'll be getting back to the, the committee with that information. Finance, we've kind of done, I think, all of our finance updates here. Facilities, Jeff, wanna speak about facilities?
No, we haven't met.
Haven't met yet, okay.
We haven't met, not since last time.
Okay, everything's still running? Next is policy. Mrs. Posul, we have some second readings.
We do, and they are. KA proposed update school community relations, relations and goals, and it reflects more updated language as recommended by the MASCE. KBA is proposed new school parent relations goals, and this, this is a new policy as recommended. KBBA proposed new non-custodial parents' rights. This, too, is a new policy as recommended. KCB proposed new community involvement in decision-making, new policy as recommended. KDB proposed update public's right to know, updated to reflect new public records requirements. LDA is a proposed update student teaching and internships, updated language. And the last is LI, proposed for deletion professional visitors and observers from education agencies. It's procedural, so we do not need it in our policy book.
So I think we take a motion to approve these for second reading and implementation for someone. So I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments on any of those? Hearing none, all in favor? I opposed, abstained, unanimous. Next up is long-term planning. I, I just had a note that Laura, you probably don't have an update because this'll start once our budget issues are all settled, then we can talk about long-term planning. Templeton Elementary. Templeton Elementary's school building committee, Mr. Mason?
We, we've reached substantial completion now, which means we have to stop paying for electricity and stuff. So we're like 99% done inside that plus punchless stuff that has to be done. We're working on the outside. That should be done by the end of July. As far as the planting trees, planting fences, the playground will be going in, so. It should be done by the end of July.
Awesome. We look forward to another tour through once they get everything done. That was, that tour was great, so we'll have to see.
Will you have an open house for the community?
There's one, well, we have a dedication on October, sorry, that match will be the same time.
And actually, it's a good question. I'm sure Dr. Casavant, you'll let us know as they start to firm up what, you know, community.
MSBA will be here and all that stuff.
Yes. Great. All right. The PME is the building committee. Jeff, any updates?
Actually, the last meeting was canceled, I think. I know, we did, yeah. I know there was some, yeah, it was canceled.
Have they rescheduled it?
Not aware.
Okay. So we need to really get this committee to get them moving. There's a lot of repairs that need to be done in that building and our students don't deserve to be in a building that isn't fit for them to be in. That reflects there's, so if we can maybe reach out and see if we can get something scheduled, that would be appreciated. Correspondence, we had a letter of thanks. And Mrs. Barney, I'm going to let you read that if you don't mind.
This is a letter that was sent to Dr. Casavant from Gabriel Bramhall, who's the Brady Marshall Athletic Phillips Memorial Day grade. Dear Dr. Casavant, it's my pleasure to relay to you how much we appreciate the gas, the marching band as a significant part of our annual Memorial Day program this past Sunday. Director Bobby Bramhall was simply great and we really thought how lucky we are to have him in our school district. Many thanks to him and to the band members for a job well done. Of C.C. to Ms. Vassal and Mr. Mason.
Thank you. We have a wonderful marching band. It's nice to see them recognized. So thank you to Mr. Bramhall for thanking the band. All right. School, school committee meeting dates. The next regularly scheduled meeting would have been August 14th, six o'clock. And in the August meeting, we always meet at Phillipston. But obviously, we have now set, the next meeting will be July 2nd. We'll start with a 5:00 p.m. finance subcommittee and a 6:30 school committee meeting. So we'll have to add that to the site.
On August 14th is at Phillipston?
August 14th will be in Phillipston.
What time?
At six o'clock. Yep. And that list on our posting site, it's all up there now. So they're, they're, they're for you to put in your books.
The last second one is here.
Yes, we'll give it up here. Yep. And next up, we have an executive session that we will go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining and to ratify the memorandum agreement with the NDEA. This meeting will return into open session immediately following. I would entertain a motion to do so.
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second. We'll start down here, Mr. Marks. Yes, Mrs. Chardier?
Yes.
Mrs. Robichaud?
Yes.
Mrs. Kojel?
Yes.
Mrs. Matson?
Yes.
And Mr. Mason?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes says yes, so it is unanimous. Again, we will, we will be coming back out into open session just to let you know what we talked about on this memorandum of agreement. Otherwise, we will take a brief intermission and go from there. We thank everyone for coming. Okay. We are now back into open session of our school committee meeting. And the only thing that we have left to do is to report out on the executive session.